I was like, oh.
The time is now seven P M and we will call our second meeting to order. All of our council members are still present. Do we have any public comments? I don't think we do. Uh, approval of minutes from special meeting held on June seventeenth, twenty twenty four.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Presentation, we have Steve Cook public works for ten years.
He's actually spraying for mosquitoes.
Can we move this so we can actually? Present him with something? If he doesn't like, okay.
Well, thank you, Steve Cook. So, moving on. Discussion and action items. Discuss and consider adopting resolution number twenty-four dash R dash eighty-seven, setting a public hearing to consider amendments to land use assumptions, capital improvement plans, and impact fees on new development for water and wastewater improvements.
So, based on the C X formal recommendation to council to move forward with a public hearing, we need to call it based, like, as per resolution in the newspaper. So, this is just the council saying, yes, we are calling a public hearing in August, as per the resolution in your packet. So, it'll be our August meeting.
So, we have to.
This is just formally calling the meeting to hear it. It's a public hearing, so they.
But we don't have to do, you know, approve the minutes first and then.
This is just setting the public hearing. It's not, yeah, it's not taking action on their recommendation.
I make a motion to adopt resolution number two-four R eight-seven at the August city council meeting. Is that okay?
No.
Wait a second.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion carries. Okay, discuss and consider a resolution extending the disaster declaration issued by mayoral proclamation on July seventh, twenty twenty-four, in response to Hurricane Barrel.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so Mayor Graham signed a disaster declaration last Sunday, um, and that goes, that lasts seven days. So, today we would need to renew the disaster declaration for the city. Um, we have put it in there to end. My packet's, sorry, we're low on internet, so.
So, it's a maximum of seven days?
For him to set it. So, for council to extend it, we have to do it by council action, and staff is recommending we extend it for another hundred days to cover the debris cleanup process. Um, this just allows spending and, um, any to recovery efforts.
Reimbursements, et cetera.
Right. Um, so, we've been forecasted ninety days for cleanup, but we wanted to give a little bit of extra, just in case we need to extend again or get extension from the debris management company.
I'll make a motion to extend the disaster declaration by one hundred days.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let the record reflect, the motion carries. Discussion regarding the status of city post Hurricane Barrel.
Mayor and council, um. I have attached. The C manager's report, and it basically is going to be the same thing as this report. Our current status today, I emailed it earlier this afternoon, recovery efforts are in full swing. Water and sewer one hundred percent operational, power has been restored to all city infrastructure assets. Communication at city hall is still provided by the one and only lovely hotspots. We have no phones, no internet at this time, but we were told it should be restored today. Streets are all one hundred percent passable. As of this writing, uh, C Richwood has about ninety-five percent of power restored to our residents. Some of the people you see saying they don't have power. It's not a power company issue, it's they have damage to their, their power mast at their house. And they should have been notified of that by now, but some of that is that. And we have about three that they were waiting on a crawler to get to because it was too muddy. They already buried one truck, so we're right there at the edge. Debris removal will begin this Wednesday. Uh, T C Q permit was, uh, authorized this, uh, yesterday, Sunday, for a temporary debris management site. Trash service, uh, for now, uh, has impacted a few people. There's numerous reasons why, low wires, debris, uh, a few other issues. So, we've brought in a dumpster that's provided at city, uh, shops so they can dispose of their garbage, but that is just a very few. Uh, damage assessments are going, ongoing at this time. There's some structural damage to city buildings, park buildings, as well as some fencing around lift stations and water plants. We're getting all that compiled now. Debris cleanup at both parks have begun. Uh, great amount of work has been done. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Ellis Park and Bobby Ford Park, they're, I would say, three quarters done now, and that was a huge mess. Both parks were devastated. Uh, FEMA paperwork has been collected this entire time. We're tracking manpower, equipment hours, and, uh, preparation for recovery from the hurricane. We're also tracking all of the expenses that, that we incurred during this phase of the operation. And the only, uh, oh, I'll leave that for the C manager's report at the end, but that's, that's what I have as far as Hurricane Barrel, uh, status update. If you have any questions.
So, the, the trash pickup? Is it going to be like these big, huge trucks that come through? So, everybody's going to put their stuff out? Is there going to be any collection point? Like, I know a few of the communities have.
No, the debris, debris pickup will all be done curb side. We, we come through and pick it up. And they'll start, they'll start Wednesday on that, so it'll.
Are you talking about later on, when we get, like, past the vegetation point, like fences and things like that?
Yes.
Same, same people do it.
Yeah. Just like an expanded version of your heavy trash day.
Yeah.
Same, same location.
Hopefully, everybody understands it's, they do it in sections. They don't.
Yeah.
If you have some out there, they'll leave some, pick some up, leave some.
Yeah.
It takes a while to go through all of it.
How far does that reach, the arm?
It, it depends on what, I, I have not personally seen the trucks they're using. Uh, we've done it with skid steers. We've done it with tractors, and we've done it with, uh, boom trucks. Uh, the boom truck is probably your most advantageous because it'll go out twenty feet. Uh, the, otherwise, they have crews there that just push the trash up and the, the, uh, skid steer picked it up with grapple. It was, it was very efficient.
Same ones for her.
Uh, same company.
Same company.
Same company, different people.
I'm just wondering, there's some, some streets that are pretty narrow, and then there's a big ditch beside it, and there's not really a place to put it other than in the street.
Yeah, we've, we've got some of those stacked partially in the street.
Behind the ditch is kind of what I'm asking.
They usually do. They usually reach.
Yeah, they're pretty far. I mean, what I've seen.
Yeah. They'll get it. They're good at it.
But there may be some, I would say, there's probably going to be some streets hard to pass when they're down there working on, picking that stuff up. It's going to take up the whole street.
Yeah.
You know, at the time.
People are really understanding, though, during that phase. They want that pile gone out of their yard. They'll wait a few minutes to let it go.
I'll tell you one thing, I don't think anyone's ever going to say it's just a cat one again.
Yeah. Amen.
But on a good point, you know, did take care of some of the tree problems we had.
I think it created tree problems.
A little of both, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, was that it for?
That's it.
That one? Okay, discuss and consider waiving permit fees for storm-related permit applications.
Mayor and council, uh, one of the things we got asked, uh, last several storms was, do we waive permit fees? Right now, what we're looking at is a bulk majority of our fees that we're going to see coming back. We have very few houses with substantial damage. I would say twenty to thirty, uh, that are, we're, we're going to require construction permits to the extent that, um, heavy electrical, plumbing, or otherwise. A lot of damages that we're seeing are, uh, fencing and, and otherwise that don't require permits, but we've been asked by council before if we can waive the permits, and we're on top of it this year. We're just asking if you want to waive the permits that are going to come through from storm damage only. Not for all permits, but just for storm damage.
We're just waiving the fees. They still have to get a permit for sure.
Yeah, they still have to permit, but the fee.
And still will be inspected, right?
Still be inspected. There will be no, no change.
It's the same process. They just won't pay us for it.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to waive the permit fees for storm-related permit applications.
I'll second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let the record reflect, the, uh, permit fees will be waived. Uh, discuss and consider approving licensing agreement for a median located at business three-eight and Creekwood Landing Drive.
Mayor and council, in, uh, twenty nineteen, the city entered an agreement with, uh, Richwood Landing apartment complex so they could put a sign in on a median that we own, uh, at two-eighty-eight in Richwood Landing. Um, that has since come into, um, the first ten years lapsed, and they sent us a letter saying they would like to renew for the next ten years. The only problem is, is the company, the L L C, that filed the original agreement no longer exists. So, that agreement right now is no one void. When I looked at the agreement, and I spoke with Philip about this several times, it, it strictly limits us to allowing one sign and one company for the next ten years. At the time the agreement was made, um, nobody really fought it, but now we've been asked by another company to put a sign there. My suggestion to council, and you can take this for what it's worth, is to write a new agreement, have Philip draft us a new agreement, and make it equal share. If another apartment complex wants to go out there, then they pay equal share. It was a ten dollar agreement, by the way, so it's not a lot of money. But they have done some landscaping, and they do have a sign there right now, that the current company. Um, but it is not the same L L C, so, um, my, I think it would be three companies maximum that would have a sign there. My, my suggestion to council is have them go vertical with a sign. You can put three signs back to back. Um, that call it good, and if they want to be there, they can. If they don't, they don't have to. But there, there will be some landscaping fee for anybody that's on the island, they're on the median. We'll split the cost for maintaining that, for the median. We, that is one meeting we don't maintain.
Would the, the limitations for the signage be described in the agreement, like?
Yeah, we would come up with some vertical.
Okay.
Height and width, so they can just put them back to back and.
Okay.
What about, isn't there something there now? So, who would dispose of what is there in order to make room for all that?
They would.
I've got a little bit of experience of leasing from cities, leasing property from cities, and I've always had, uh, everyone I've ever seen has had a requirement for capital improvements. Um, around a sign, obviously, there's not going to be a whole lot, but I think that it'd probably be a good practice in the future to have any leases from the city have a requirement for capital improvements on, uh, on that property, because otherwise, we're going to be doing it.
Yeah, it's well ke, it's well kept. I have no argument with the landscape, that there's rock, they put a tree there. It's, it's well kept. And like I said, in the new agreement, there'll be a contractual obligation between anybody who goes out there to split that cost and maintain it, at least in the current state. One thing that bothered me about this agreement, too, is there's no out for the city. Uh, there is a very limited out, and there needs to be us to have the ability to terminate that agreement for any reason within ninety days or hundred and eighty days to, if we just decide we need that island back, we get it back. It's ours. It's a no cost at that point for them, and so I discussed that with Philip, and I just think, I think now is the time. Uh, because that agreement would extend out another ten years. And I don't think it's fair to the other apartments down there.
They've called complaining.
Yeah.
So, you could change the verbiage to reflect that.
Yeah.
Do you want to make a motion, Will?
I'm trying to, I'm thinking about this thing, which.
What are you thinking, Jeremy?
Can you put a picture of it on, on the screen or anything? Can I see what we're looking at?
Yeah, I send it out to, to all, to council. They have it in their packet, but, uh.
Yeah, this is in there.
I'm just wondering what.
Picture was in your previous, you know.
I understand you put, you put limitations on the sign has to be, what, I guess you can specify what type of sign it's that? Because what if some, what if one company spends more than the other, and then you get into like.
Yeah, it'd be like equal sized sign, you know?
It will be equal sized signs and equal, if there's two people on the island, then they split the cost fifty-fifty, so if there's three, they split it in thirds. That's the easiest way to do it.
Yeah, I just don't want to get it.
There's only, there's only three complexes back there, so.
I just don't want to get it like, well, you got that, and, you know, you know, all that kind of stuff.
We can, we can write something into the agreement.
We can make them work together.
Yeah, it's, it's our agreement, so, and it's our property, and you, I mean, at that point, you can put virtually anything in there.
I'd, I'd say where it had to be like equal sizes, you know, so one person doesn't have like a Vegas-style billboard sitting there, and the other person on the hill.
Yeah, there'll be a, there'll be a height, we'll write a height and width in there.
Okay. Yeah.
So, you're saying you don't want them to make one fancier than the other? Even if they're the same size?
Make it fancy.
One lit up and not lit up?
We're going to put a dollar sign limit on it? Yeah. Vegas.
I'll make a motion to approve license agreement for median located at business two-eighty-eight Creekwood Landing Drive. I'll second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let the record reflect, the motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Uh, moving on to F, discussion regarding fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget and utility rates. Just ditto.
Mayor and council, this is, uh, the meeting that we originally had scheduled for today. This is the follow-up to our last meeting. Unfortunately, we just combined them and put them all together.
It was hard, coming back after a week of hurricane to look at budget again, but here we are. And we need to do this, and in some ways, it's more relevant than ever after going through what we're going through.
You going to give us next Monday off?
Yeah.
I don't need to hear next Monday, so. We can keep skipping forward. Okay, so, this year, our budget approach, um, it doesn't vary much from other years, but, um, you know, we want to maintain basic services, uh, but we don't want to forget, uh, about the future. So, for the fifth year, we prepared a budget that reflects the actual cost of running this city with no fluff and no unneeded spending. Um, we want to maintain a competitive wage structure, keep and attract quality employees. Uh, this budget includes a four percent pay raise for staff based on cost of living increase. Um, social security published last October a three point two, um, which took effect, uh, this last January. Um, so, we are asking for a four percent. Um, we're going to provide some supplemental requests for council's consideration and possible inclusion. Um, we went over some of those, or all of them, last time, and this time, I'm going to ask you for a little, uh, more feedback and possible, uh, guidance. We're also going to go over some proposed utility rates. We try to set our utility rates at a level that covers all the operating expenses for the, um, enterprise fund, but also allows for reserve funding for future growth. And then we want to build on our progress by increasing reserve saving. We've seen this week a prime example of why we have a reserve fund. Uh, we have about a million dollars in our contingency fund, and we're going to have to write a check for a half a million dollars for debris management. We'll get refunded, or not refunded, reimbursed from FEMA.
Seventy-five percent.
For seventy-five percent of that, but the, five years ago, we would not have been able to write that check. Today, we can, so.
And that reimbursement process takes some time, right? It's not immediate.
Yeah. We, we can't tell the debris companies, wait till FEMA gets back to us. We have to give them that check. So, this is why we have to have healthy contingencies, not just for building, for future growth. But we live on the coast.
Yep.
So. Okay. Um, again, I have the budget calendar in here. Um, these are all things that are set pretty much by state law, how we have to go through it. So, um, tonight, I'm going to go over some information for you. I don't have firm numbers for revenues because we don't get our firm numbers from the county until August first. I'm giving you my projection based on what they gave us in April. Um, and then in August, on August twelfth, we'll have a public hearing on the CCPD budget, which is set by their board, but requires, um, approval by the council. And we'll take a record vote on the tax rate. That will not be the tax rate that we adopt. It will be the maximum tax rate that we will adopt. Um, we can go lower, but just after that vote is taken, we can't go higher. So, that gets councils scared sometimes. Um, but it, we are not voting on the tax rate, then we're just voting on our ceiling. Um, in September, we will do the tax rate and budget adoption. And we have to have our tax rate to the county by the twentieth, or they will yell at us and actually charge us money, so. Uh, the next page. So, um, Richwood is dependent on our ad valorem taxes or property taxes. They make up about seventy-five percent of our general fund revenue. Um, other cities that have a lot of retail aren't as dependent, but we are. We are limited to an eight percent increase on our revenue on existing properties that were taxed last year. Um, you will hear a lot of cities say we're limited to three and a half percent, but if you are under a thirty thousand dollar pop, thirty thousand population, um, you can go up to eight percent, uh, without having to go to a petition on the ballot. So, using the very preliminary numbers the county gave me and doing a very rough calculation, um, I'm estimating our tax rate for the general fund maintenance and operations to be four, three, point, point four-three-five-four-six-seven, um, our maximum, which is down point four, from point four-four-one-eight-two-three that we're currently sitting at. Our debt, um, is based on our annual requirements to satisfy our debt for principal and interest, and I'm projecting that that will be point zero-eight-two-five-one-eight, whereas the prior year was point zero-nine-eight-seven-six-four. So, as you can see, both tax rates are going to go down. Our estimated taxable assessed value that the county gave us was five hundred and forty-nine million, five hundred thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars, which is up from four hundred and ninety-two million plus. Of that, about ten million, a little over ten million is new improvements. So, based on these numbers, um, I'm estimating that our revenue for our general fund from, um, property taxes will be two point three-nine million, which is up from two point one-eight million this current year. Again, these are all very rough preliminary numbers, but it's something to look, to project on. Um, the next screen just shows you, uh, some history on our tax rate, and it has gone down every year since I've been here. But anyway, um, and one thing I just want to caution council on, if you go with a less, I'm not saying we have to go with the maximum we can go with, but if you go with a less than maximum, you're hurting, or you're reducing your possible tax rate for future years, because every year is built on your current year. So, just keep that in mind. Okay, next page. So, a snapshot of our general fund revenue. Um, I'm predicting, or projecting, total revenue of three point six-seven-six million, which is up about two hundred and thirty-six thousand from this current year. The majority of that increase is from tax revenue on the ad valorem. Um, these are all projections. We don't vote on revenue projections, but they give us an idea of where our budget can be.
I think I asked this last year, so I'm sorry if I did, but. The projections that the county gives you, is that based on an assumption that X percent will be reduced from their initial assessment?
They're, yeah, they go through protests, and when we get the certified, it'll have an amount of protest that are under protest at that point.
Okay.
That haven't been settled, and they give us the worst-case scenario.
But the initial projection they give us, is that based on the first number that they gave everybody, or based on that number less?
Yeah.
Five percent?
Yeah, I don't know how they calculate it, to be quite honest.
Okay.
Um, we have seen a decrease in sales tax last year. This current year, it's come up a little bit. Um, last year, I overbudgeted for court, uh, revenue, so that's gone down a little bit. Um, so, these are all projections, but it's just a guidepost, basically, to show you guys where we're going to be. Any questions so far? So, the next screen, I bring forward the total revenue, then we have our expenditures, um, by department. So, if you go down to the bottom, right now, as it sits, I'm projecting that will come out a positive of just under a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. This does not have, um, we're still waiting on insurance numbers. Um, we're, I have the current cost for our health insurance built into the budget, but I've increased our liabilities and autos and things, um, thirty percent for the budget, so those can vary.
Did we see about a thirty percent increase this last year?
Uh, more than that.
More, okay.
Yeah. Um, so, these are all speculation at this point, and that's why these are, this budget is not final. Um, we're waiting on that, um, and just some other, you know, some other final things. Um, but right now, as it sits, um, we have a positive on the bottom line, and this is fully funding our contingency fund uh, for ten percent of expenditures. This is also increasing our reserve savings for our replacement fund, uh, slightly. So, any questions on any of that? I gave you all a copy of the budget last month. I didn't give you another copy because it hasn't changed yet, because we haven't gotten any of those updated numbers. But if you have any questions, I have my copy here. So, um, the next screen, this kind of answers your question about insurance. Our named storm is our worst increase. Um, it has gone up since twenty twenty-one, three hundred and sixty-four percent. So, um, that's a big chunk of money. Um, so, I have included thirty percent in all of our insurances. Um, some have gone up, some have gone up because of additions, like the Northwater plant, um, things like that, but it's also just gone up because insurance has gone up. Okay, so, again, this budget includes a four percent COLA for all employees. We're not doing merit this year because it's, uh, awarded every other year on the even numbered years. And it includes a fifteen thousand dollar transfer from CCPD to help defray some overtime for the PD. So, um, these are the supplements that we had brought to you last month, uh, for general fund. Um, the first one is the reconstruction of Cypress and Misty Court. We're asking to do that at a cost of seven hundred thousand dollar estimate, um, and that would come not from budget. Um, it wouldn't be added to the budget. It would come from our general fund balance. Uh, right now, we have about one point eight million of, um, unrestricted general fund only, but, um, fund balance. So, we could take that out of there. Um, as I mentioned last month, um, G F O A recommends no less than two months of expenditures as a reserve balance. Um, we have, like, ten months, so, so we're very good. The second one, um, would also come from general fund balance, um, doing a master plan for streets and parks. Would, the estimated cost on that is two hundred thousand dollars. So, we have a total of nine hundred thousand being asked to come out of the general fund balance. The next two would be added to the budget and reduce that bottom line. Um, an E O C remodel and construction, the cost estimate on that is ten thousand, four hundred and eighty. And the shipping containers for the service center, um, that would be twenty-six thousand. So, what I would like to ask of you now is any discussion on those or any recommendations that you would like to see them included? Um, or any opposition, any reasons why you would not want them included? Again, these would be put, built into the budget, even the ones coming out of fund balance would be built into the budget with a fund balance transfer shown. Um, if, as we get later numbers, things are tighter than they look right now, they would be the first to go before other things that are already in the budget, um, and we would bring it back to you. But right now, um, I would just like to get some feedback on those. But right now, I would just like to get some feedback on those.
You got any specs on your shipping containers?
About forty feet.
Just two of them?
Two of them.
But that includes a slab, right?
Yeah, we went to that before, that's not just containers, that's like.
I've never put, seen anyone put shipping containers on a slab before. Is that, what, what's the deal with that?
It might store, like, store liquids.
It's on existing concrete, this challenger, where the, where the fuel tanks were.
Uh huh.
It's just extending the concrete because I can't, they can't be leveled at a length of forty feet. Because the flat concrete pad is only thirty, so we need to extend that concrete, so they're sitting on level ground.
Man, would it save us some money if we did thirty-foot containers?
It would, but it'd cut down the room, down any of the room.
It's a big difference. I'd like to have discussion on that at some point, but also I'd like to ask, what's, uh, what is the issue with the Cypress and Misty Court reconstruction?
We've, we've had it in the budget for three years. And we, we had it fully intended to use our overages to cover that. And then last year, we came to council and asked council to do the equipment purchase instead. Council agreed to do the equipment purchase as long as we kept Misty Court and Cypress Court on the, for this year. So we're bringing it back. But the, these are, again, these are why we have the overages. This is a seven hundred thousand dollar project, reconstructing a road to, to county standards that we pay for cash.
Yeah, no debt.
No debt. So this, this is a, again, part of that engineered overage that we do to do pay-as-you-go projects.
And it's been my understanding, we've promised this to the residents of those streets on multiple occasions.
It was two budgets ago that we built it in.
Yeah.
This last budget, we did not, but we promised that it would be brought back this year.
Yeah, I rode down the road, I just didn't, didn't see the problems, I guess. I saw one section, maybe twenty feet long.
I'll take you down here. We'll be able to take you down.
Okay, I might need to, because I rode down on myself and didn't look. I mean, it wasn't new, but there's one spot where there's a big, large oak tree sitting next to it. Looks like it's probably doing some damage to the street underneath. And it's been patched up a few times, but there's more than that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Those streets and parks master plan, so what would that, I mean?
So what the, what the master plan is, Jeremy, especially with parks, with the limited funding Public Works has in parks, master planning, one is important if we want to pursue any grant funding in the future. We have zero chance of being awarded any sizable grant without some kind of a master plan in place that's been implemented by engineers. The streets is.
Streets, I understand.
Really, yeah, the same thing we did with the, with the bond project. And the idea of both master plans provides council with a direction. So it kind of prioritizes our, our issues. So when, when you go to look at, at this big picture, you're not slamming your head up against a brick wall trying to figure out what to do. Most of the work's already been done for you. And then we can just pick through the projects, priorities need to change, we can do that. But it's in front of you, black and white, what needs to be done and why it needs to be done.
Do you have to do, do you have, do they do them together? Or can you separate it, like maybe this year you do the street and next year you do the parks?
Yeah, you can, you can do it however you want. And this is a, this is a testament, at a hundred thousand views, I think that's concerned, maybe a bit less. But we, we want to get the master, since we have the money, we want to get the master plans in place and in front of council because parks has been large discussion. The streets is going to be an even bigger one here in about five years.
And I would guess, doing them together is going to save money over doing two separate.
Yeah, we're probably going to gain some efficiency. They don't tie together, but still.
Right.
You know, being in town at the same time, you'll get two different things at the same time, it's going to.
Administrative costs for the engineering firms, all those overhead expenses.
And our time.
Yeah.
Just a, an interesting fact, I was reading the Constitution and just history stuff over the last year. And I, I discovered that our public works was actually, in Texas, was made for parks. It was an economic recovery package during the nineteen thirties to build parks. So, kind of whole purpose, you know, it's interesting that we're, that's where it started.
As you know, what it is water is generally something, the waste water is generally something.
Yeah, people had wells and stuff. I remember when I was a kid, we had a, one, one house on the end of the street had a well. And they had a water hose to everybody's on the streets, you know, that's how we did it.
They're going to fly that these days.
When I was a baby, I don't remember that, that was my dad telling me those stories, but.
So, and then the EOC remodel. I can tell you after this last week, I think anybody that sat in there would like that done. And Eric gave you some detail on that last month. And then, as we talked about, the shipping containers, so. If nobody is opposed to it, I will go ahead and build them into the budget as they sit. And again, if, once we get insurance numbers, once we get tax dollars firmed up and things, we can always revisit it, but to build it in. I firmly believe we need to start spending some of our fund balance in order to get some of these projects done and to spend them wisely.
So that's what we, I mean, you can go ahead and build them in, but if something happens and we wanted to.
Yep, we're the first out.
Yeah.
So just to be clear, that, that's not all in the budget, though. Is that correct?
None of these are in the budget right now.
This is just coming out of cash that we've saved up in the fund balance.
Except, well, the EOC remodel and the shipping container will be added to the budget line items.
Added to the budget.
The seven hundred and the two hundred thousand dollar ones will be coming out of fund balance.
Out of the one point eight unrestricted.
Okay, anything else? The next page, we don't talk a lot about.
Just before, you, you said if anybody has any opposition, I would probably prefer, when it comes to the shipping chainers, it, it seems like a temporary thing to me, maybe try the thirties and then see where we go from there. Because that's, that's a difference. We can discuss it later, I'm just saying my, where I stand on it.
All right, so the next page. We haven't talked about the transportation fund a lot, but we do have one supplemental for that. So I brought you some information. Back in eighteen nineteen, the transportation fund was created. It's a, a sub-fund of the general fund, just restricted to street sidewalks and drainage. Every year, we get revenue from sales tax that is restricted to streets only. And then we get revenue off of our utility bills for the transportation fee that is for streets, sidewalks, or drainage. It can be used for any of the three. And the interest, I don't budget off of, because that's always an unknown. But so what we do when we create the transportation fund budget, we take the total sales tax streets and one-third of the transportation fee. And that's what we budget for streets M and R, so that Cliff doesn't have to keep running back every time something happens. Then we take another third of the transportation fee for sidewalks and the last third for drainage. So, the change in fund balance just shows as a eighteen thousand dollar, what I'm guessing for interest. Cliff never spends it completely. We were predicting, after some projects were being done with remaining bond money and having to put in some fund balance from the transportation fund to get some things done, that this fund balance would be down, you know, under fifty thousand. And as you can see, we're at four hundred thousand. So Cliff's done a really good job building that back up. So the one supplemental on that is to do contract labor for, is that for asphalt sealing?
Yes, it's for asphalt cracks.
For sixty-five thousand, and it would, once we put it in the budget, it'll be budgeted annually at sixty-five thousand, which is a savings he's got an opportunity for. And we discussed that last time, too. Any discussion or questions or opposition to that?
I agree with leaving it in. We, we discussed this at length last time, and he gave us a really good understanding of why it's there and what it's going to be used for.
Any other?
It's pretty easy on that one. It's, what, sixty-eight thousand versus a hundred and twenty thousand?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we can, and we can go much higher than that if we, if we do to the extent that we truly need to do annually. This is just a, this is just a, a source of, of labor that can get the same thing done for a fraction of the price.
Yeah.
Just a second, the study for the, like the, you're playing for streets and parks doesn't go in this.
It could. Parks isn't really part of that, though.
Right.
Parks is general fund. Most administrative things stay in general fund. That's more the maintenance and, and repair.
I got you.
Made me think for a second.
Well, in, in streets, streets could, just to, but Jeremy, also annually, and this kind of ties back to the, the Misty Court project. We have an interlocal agreement with Missouri County where we get road work at material costs, no labor, with their equipment every year. We get up to two miles. We generally try to reserve this money for those projects. And in doing the Misty Court, we're able to reallocate the county's efforts to other streets that also need assistance. But this fund funds a lot of that. And street work is incredibly expensive, even when you're not paying for labor and equipment. And that's, that's why we did, maybe did not take it out of this fund. We try to reserve this fund as much as possible for streets, sidewalks, and any drainage stuff we have to do.
Which, I think is a good point to bring this up. So, this is also ties in with the streets master plan. So you, you know, right now, we're going this street, that street, this street, that street. When you do the streets master plan, they're, they're literally ranked numerically by their condition. And so you go in, you do the core samples, you do this, you know, this is such percentage of failure. So when we bring a project to council, where are they on the list? That's number one, great, do it. They're number two, great, do it. Number three, great. So, there's a logic behind it, other than sending Cliff out in his truck and finding what he deems is the worst street. Now, he's got a good eye, I'm not knocking him for that. He, he steers us in the right direction, but then you can come to council and you can say, number one on our list is due next, here's the cost, here's, you know. So they, they all kind of tie together, it's a logical process that, I think this is a good point to illustrate that.
Helps us direct our money in the right direction. Any more discussion on that? So we can switch over to enterprise fund then. So as I spoke last time, our enterprise fund is a business-like activity. It operates much like a for-profit business, but we don't, we don't operate it for a profit. We want to make sure that the utility revenue is sufficient to pay for the operations as well as some reserve. So in twenty nineteen, we had a rate study done. And it helped us to determine what our utility rates should be for the next five years. And the rates that they provided for us gave us the revenue needed to sustain operations, to provide for our debt requirements, and to build reserves for a future at ten percent of the annual expenses. So, we have implemented a rate increase every year since two, twenty nineteen. Those rates, we have adjusted for unprecedented or unexpected, I guess is the word, increases from BWA and VRA, which is our water and our sewer. So, we're still, this is the last year that we will have rates based on the rate study. We have decided to not do a rate study right away again, that we will just continue with that same methodology and maybe bring a rate study back to the budget talks in a year or two. So, if you flip the page or the next screen. So our two thousand and nineteen rate study gave us rates for fiscal years twenty through twenty-five that, like I said, they covered a hundred percent of our M and O. They covered a hundred percent of our debt requirements. And they allowed for ten percent to be set into a reserve for future needs. And so what I have done this year is I have verified that the rates I'm proposing do just that. Cover our M and O, cover our debt requirement, and leave the bottom line at ten percent of our expenses. So if we flip to the next page, you'll see the highlighted fiscal year twenty-five rates. I am recommending a rate for, a base rate for water to go from thirty-seven, fifty-three to thirty-nine, eleven. For sewer, to go from twenty-eight, fifty to twenty-nine, thirty. And solid waste, which is a pass-through from waste connections, will stay the same, as we have the same contract for another year.
Did BWA give you any?
What's that?
Did BWA come up with their new rate yet?
Yes, it was the maximum.
Yeah. So, and then the tier one and tier two and the RV parks, I've raised accordingly with those. So let's talk about those a little bit. Flip to the next screen. So, as I said, with that study, it was expected that we would put ten percent of our annual expense into a reserve. So, the top section here, INI Fund and Capital Improvements, are actual reserve transfers we've made each year. So we put in two hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine. Now, if you look at the expense for those years, the ten percent of expense cumulative should have been nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four. But we have increased our fund balance, so it's not that we haven't put away anything. When I came in twenty twenty, the unrestricted net position for our enterprise fund was a negative one hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. At the beginning of this current fiscal year, it's five hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-three. So we have increased our fund balance seven hundred and one thousand and fifty-nine dollars. So, that includes what we transferred into those reserve funds. So while we haven't put the full ten percent in of nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, we've done pretty well. But I strongly suggest that going forward, we, we focus on getting that ten percent put away each year for us to be able to meet some of the oncoming things like we heard tonight from the CAC thing.
That's kind of one point I was going to make. We just had a discussion about INI, and we've had discussions before about INI. I think that would probably be a priority.
So, just to give you some history, the INI fund transfer every year, my predecessor had calculated a rate increase for sewer in nineteen that would allow seventy thousand dollars of it to be transferred in to INI reserve. When I came and I redid her calculation, she was off. So it only allows thirty-four thousand, that rate increase. So we have put that thirty-four thousand in every year, but that's all that that rate increase included. The capital improvements transfer, the first year I was here, we paid off a note that Public Works had with the local bank. And Cliff asked if going forward, we could put that, the amount that we paid on that note, into the reserve for capital improvements. So we've done that. We also, in the capital improvements fund, that's where the impact fees go. So there is some money in there from that, but that is included in that seven hundred and one thousand increase in fund balance. So.
Will, do you remember the completion date for the new reservoir? That BWA and Dow were building?
Twenty.
Is it twenty twenty?
I almost said it's like twenty thirty.
Do you know when the rate increase will begin for that reservoir? Because as I understood it, fifteen percent of that cost will be sent out to.
It's already coming.
The user.
Yeah.
It's already.
Yeah, part of that is debt service, the new rate that they're.
Yeah, part of it's already in.
Okay.
And, and that's factored into what BWA sends. And, and that's factored into what BWA sends us over. So when BWA sends their budget over to us and we adopt it, it's already factored into those numbers. So you, you don't see that when they send it over saying, hey, you know, this is what it was plus this. They're just sending you the whole number, saying, hey, this is what we're charging. And it's already got all those percentages.
And we've seen about a 12% increase the last three years.
I'm gonna, I'll look for it. I'll send you the, uh, I'll send council the amortization table that shows.
Yeah, we have a breakdown.
Okay.
It's not exorbitant by any means.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's like tiered, but as years go on, you get more.
I'm just trying to be sensitive to the fact that we're going to increase utility rates, and then I don't want people to get hit with another 15% increase from BWA because of this reservoir.
Yeah. No, it's, it's already, we're already seeing that.
I, I know when it was factored in, I mean, it was literally just a few dollars for like, I forget how many thousands of gallons of water, like.
Dollar twenty, dollar twenty-five or dollar fifteen off the top of my head.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless you watch your water bill like a hawk, you would never even know that that dollar, something went on there.
So as it stands, this, this proposal here, the total increase per month is 2.38. Two dollars and 38 cents as it sits right now. And that's, those are strictly the increases that we got from BWA and VRA.
Okay.
So what I did this year, um, basically, I, I kind of worked backwards. And what I needed on the budget, what I needed for revenue to cover that 100% of MNO, that 100% of debt, and leave 10%, I worked backwards this time.
Okay.
And that's where I came with those, those figures, which are still higher than last year slightly. They're higher than the proposed in our rate study for the five years. But they give us what our goal is. A little bit extra right now because I'm waiting on insurance and things. So I'm not asking you guys to approve these rates tonight because they could change. But I'm asking just kind of your understanding that I think our goal needs to be those three mile, those three, uh, whatever, I can't think of it. 100% of operation, 100% of debt, and 10% reserve. So if you go to the next page, um, what I did is I took that rate times our existing connections and added 4% to the number of connections, which is what we normally see. And so came up with our total revenues, our total expenses, we went through last time. And the math doesn't show because I'm not showing you the transfers and things on here, but, um, that's leaving us a change in net position of 260,000, which would be that 10%, um, slightly over, like I said, because I'm at 2.2 million for expense. But, um, so that's going to fluctuate. But that gives us 10%, and if we are over, a little bit over 10%, as you saw in the previous screen, we're behind on our reserve saving from that five years, so.
And those reserves are for, like, when the water may bust and all that?
Capital improvements and INI, basically, for enterprise only. This is all restricted to the water plant, sewer plant. Any questions on any of that? Okay. Then the next screen, our last one. Um, and there's only one supplemental in the enterprise fund, and this will take down that extra amount in our bottom line. And Cliff can talk about this again if you have more questions, but we brought it to you last month, is adding another position. It's required by TCQ. Um, he doesn't have the manpower to do everything TCQ, um, requires. Um, I did catch one thing, um, in the last presentation, we only had the wages. So this is including taxes and benefits at 60,000. We had 44 last time, so I apologize for that. Um, but so.
Is that hard to omit that, right?
So, um, this is the 60,000, 645 would be, um, hiring a new employee in addition.
Is that included in this?
It's not included in the budget right now. None of the supplementals are, but we would add it.
I support it.
Yeah.
You need to add it so we can see the full number.
Okay. So I will go ahead and build that in. If I have to adjust the rates that I'm suggesting a few pennies, we'll see how it all falls out. Does anybody have any questions?
As a distribution operator, is that a, is that a desk job or is that out there working?
No, it's out there working. No such thing as desk job, public work.
It's the one he spoke to us about where he's got to go out and check all the connections and all that. We, it was one or two council meetings ago, you went over it?
Yeah, and, and Mr. Chandra, distribution operator is going to be focused on valve exercising and functionality and, um...
And copper?
No, uh, the, uh...
It's regulatory compliance.
Serviceability of the implements we have on our water system, being the valves, being the hydrants, uh, some we haven't turned in 30 years. So we've got to be able to tell you what works and what does not work in distribution. And this is going to take years, even with, uh, the additional people I have, that it'll get me started.
And you don't have anybody that can do that right now?
Yeah, we have people that can do it right now. We just can't get on and stay on it.
We don't have enough man hours?
Could we pull someone off of something else that's not a priority?
He's already undermanned.
He's undermanned.
Everything's a problem.
I don't know that for a fact. I'd...
I think if you look around the city the last week, you would absolutely know that.
I'm not going to take the same comments that I had last time. If I was talked to the way you talked to me last time, I would be vilified. So we're, me and him are going to have a conversation. If you want to talk directly, directly to me.
The entire council is going to have the conversation.
No, you talked directly to me.
You don't operate alone.
You talked directly to me last time, and that was rude, the way you treated me, and I'm not going to put up with it, okay?
Then don't talk over me when I'm speaking.
I didn't talk over you. I said, I, I didn't say that. And you put words in my mouth and make me seem like I'm trying to get some big study. I asked him how busy he was.
Well, Cliff's guys are, um, are extremely busy. We have one opening right now that we are having trouble filling because it's hard to find guys that will do what they do. So this will give us the opportunity to...
Is this guy going to need a new truck too?
No.
No?
No, I think we accommodate everybody with your foot.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
It's a, it's quite a bit of money, and, you know, hiring people is, is a, is a big deal. You know, I mean, it's a lifetime commitment to someone with benefits and retirement and...
It is.
I just, you know, it's something that I think that I'd, I'd, I'd love to see some data, you know, but we're not getting that.
Well, and when...
Yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to produce that as well. Um, I'm not sure if it's in the supplementals here. I don't think it is shown here, but we, we're trying to talk about that as well. And I guess, we'll put it like this, because I think, I think this conversation could go on and on. TCQ has told me what's required of me. I can't accomplish it. So I'm making the proper request to council, and if I can't get it, I'll just tell TCQ I can. I tried, and y'all can answer for it.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if there's anything that we could pull someone off of. You know, is, is someone mowing a lawn and we can get someone else to mow the lawn or something like that?
We can complain because we're not mowed. They, we have boxes in our hallway piled up right now of time-sensitive material that Patrick Works, Public Works needs to deal with. And right when it came, a hurricane hit. Um, we're having, you know, Cliff is, you know, chasing his tail half the time trying to get everything done.
Let me ask you this, Eric. He answered directly to you. Does he need another individual? Because it's not my job to directly supervise him or his jobs. That's your job. As his supervisor, does he need the other individual?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, all, all of these supplementals I approve. So what, what you're seeing up there all came through us.
Uh, that's all, that's all you know, because it's not my job to supervise him and how he does it.
I think, could, I don't know how tactical this is going to be, but I'm going to say it right now. When you have a city that has valves that have not turned in 30 years and a house burns down, we are responsible. Then on top of that, since that is not happening, we don't have the people for that. Now we have additional compliance unfunded mandates from the state that, that takes even more staff out of what he's already doing. We're, we're hurting in a bad way. And we, what, what Cliff is not telling you is, that's fine. Don't put the, don't hire the person. But you're going to get a notice from TCQ, you're out of compliance, and they immediately go to fines. And those fines are anywhere from 1,200 to 5,000 dollars per day. And everybody's going to be mad and want to fire Cliff, and Cliff brought it to council.
But that's the point we're at. And if we're going to do that, let's get on with it. Or give me what else to tell you I need. I'm, I'm just at that point. I've tried to stretch it as far as I can, and I got nowhere else to go.
So to, to tell you how short staff we are, everybody in this room right now that's on city payroll has been at work since the 5th. That's every single day since the 5th. We don't have the way to rotate staff through, or whatever the, the case may be. Originally, when Cliff took over Public Works, they had 11 people in Public Works. We have six bodies right now. Six or seven? Six.
Seven.
Seven.
I think that open will, the current open will make eight.
Yeah, and yet our unfunded mandates have increased tenfold. So work is, work is just piling up and piling up and piling up. And, you know, I, I sense his frustration. He's a very nice and polite man. And, and he's not going to say the inevitable. What, what I'm saying is, it scares the bejesus out of me. I know we have fire hydrants that will not spit water right now.
I don't know, to me, it just seems like...
We know it.
It's an uphill battle for him. He has to constantly fight and argue when he says he needs something, you know? We're up here to say yes or no. He's got the funding. We rely on you as his immediate supervisor to tell us if that's the, the case or not. He needs the manpower, he needs the space. I mean, he's not requesting a whole building being built. He's not requesting five more individuals. He's begging for what he needs to do his job.
Yeah, and I...
I, I don't, I don't know his job 100% just like he doesn't know mine. I have to rely on him to give you the facts, you to give us the facts. And the facts are, the man needs the stuff to get his job done.
And we, we've tried. And, and we've tried to accomplish what we need to accomplish. We can't get it done on any consistent basis, being that we've turned roughly 85 valves in two years. We've exercised 42 hydrants. At that rate, that should be done in about 25 years. I just, and, and I hate to get frustrated, but we've tried this, and the reason we've tried it is the same approach. And, and I understand, Ms. Chandra, what you're asking. I don't, I don't blame you. But we've already driven it to failure because it's been pushed, because it's reoccurring costs, and, okay, then I'll give it a shot. And, and I'm here telling you today on this budget, I can't do it. And I'm going to inform the TCQ that I can't do it because it's failed. I have nowhere else to go. I can't provide anything else towards this.
And this comes out of the enterprise fund?
Yeah.
And it's not, it's not a threat to council. It's, it's a responsible move by myself because TCQ has told me you have to do this. So I'm, I'm doing what I believe will accommodate their requests. And there's nowhere left for me to go if I can't accomplish this goal. I have to let you guys speak for it.
I've been there. I can see, I can see where you're at, and I think I'll, I'll give you my vote, but I want you to know that I do, I would like to have some work orders in the future.
I appreciate that, yes.
So that we can, we can better track this stuff.
We are, and Mr. Chandra...
There was not even need this conversation.
We, we fully understand what he, what he spoke about it, but four, five, six months ago. We, we have demoed untold, uh, software. The original ones we looked at were cost prohibitive. They were, they were a third of that cost. We have since found, uh, very reasonable software. I think will do, uh, a myriad of things a lot better. Costing, manpower utilization, um, equipment tracking, uh...
Service orders.
Service orders. We, we bumped into some software I think is phenomenal, and we'll bring that to council. But, um, no, I, I agree wholeheartedly, Cliff agrees wholeheartedly, that we use the analogy, when you need new manpower and you ask the question, you know, how, how bad do you need them? I need them real bad. That doesn't work. You know, we're operating at 90% manpower utilization. We did, you know, 1,100 work orders. That, that's substantial data. That's empirical data that you can bring. And council was, wow, we had no idea. So we're...
Yeah, there's so much that we can get from it. And we can have a discussion about it later, I'm sure, but that's...
But we're, we're, I think we've narrowed down to the software we wanted. We demoed them the week before the hurricane. That just put us back a little bit. But, uh, no, I, I, I'm not knocking you. And some of this does not exist without lack of action from other councils as well. It's not this council. It, it, it's a systemic problem with a town our size. And I like to say we're, we're a tweener town. We're in between a large town and a small town. And unfortunately, I talk to other city managers that are facing the same things. I don't know how some of these towns smaller than us do it. I really don't. Just their mandated requirements are obscene. You know, and they're unfunded. You know, I wish somebody down in Austin would realize.
I wish we could have a conversation about three-letter agencies.
Amen, amen.
And the regulations that SWPPP drives.
I just don't want you to think that we're dismissing that your concerns we do when we talk about it, and we're, we're working for a... Alex said, I believe we found the one because Cliff and I both lit up when we did the demo on that, so, um, I think we'll get there.
So does anybody have any other questions on my budget presentation right now? Um, I'm always available in my office if you think of something, but...
Thank you, Tricia.
Thank you, Trish.
Thank you.
That's all, huh?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Consider items removed from consent agenda, which was nothing, right? Okay, moving on to capital improvements projects update.
Well, it's Cliff again.
Oh, no worries.
All right. So the ARPA, start with the ARPA project, uh, the South Water Plant. Uh, we had the official startup on 612, a booster pump station. It's been tied into the ground storage tank and also into distribution. Uh, everything is functioning. The generators, uh, the contract would be beginning construction soon. I think all their submittals are already in for the generators, both at the service center and the water well. And they're going to start as soon as we can get those generators. So we should have word on that within the next couple of weeks. I think we're going to have, uh, I think we have a first construction progress meeting scheduled within the next couple of weeks. The Mid-Bod Project, being the drainage, uh, pavement improvements for Four Oaks, Bra Creek, and Quill Run. Public management is having a environmental consultant look at, um, possible wetlands. We, we had a snafu where some areas popped up, so they had to do a delineation for, for wetlands. There are no wetlands. The project's not in jeopardy. They just had to take an extra step to prove that. And we're there, and now we're currently waiting on the final notice to proceed. Of course, the impact fees we went through tonight, you guys are moving forward, um, with the next meeting. I hope the process is going as, as smooth as y'all hoped it would, and, and we will definitely get there. The last thing on capital improvements, I guess I need to mention, uh, don't know if council knows anything about this at this point. Over the, the storm event, the lift stations pumped to an absorbing amount. We saw pump, pumping rates that we've never seen before. Some of the stations went for 96 hours without stopping. Uh, we don't know if, of damage due to any, or damage to any pumps due to that. Hopefully none, uh, but one of the issues that we did see with that increased amount of pumping is a force main compromise for Lift Station 6. This makes this bad in a couple of different ways. You know, Lift Station 6 pumps over Oyster Creek. It eventually ends up includes collection system, which has gone to a lift station that mirrors ours into the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, the force main gave way. The force main gave way over the storm, and it blew a hole in the backside of the force main. It's ductile iron. It was installed in eighty-one. It's pretty thin. We blew a hole in it, and we, we released wastewater. Now we fixed the problem. We've done all the proper reporting to TCQ, but the problem remains. The twelve-inch force main over Oyster Creek is, is shot. We didn't know it was shot. There was no way to know it was shot until it, until it blew a hole in it. And then we could realize that the ductile iron has gotten papered thin.
That's the one runs underneath that bridge, right?
Yes, sir. So we've got, we've started to get some estimates together, and I think, I think Eric plans to address that in his report. But I think it's something council wants to consider, replacement. This is one of these projects, these capital improvement monies that get put into the fund balance of the Enterprise Fund, that this is why. Yeah, so, and, and we have plenty of other situations like this that could pop up. But this is a doozy, especially because it's over a brackish waterway. It can be a real problem. And if this portion went, all the rest of the line is the same age, logic is going to tell you that you probably got another one coming up here pretty quick. Because it did not happen at a joint. It happened at the center of a piece of line. It just blew. So, but other than that, that's all I have right now on capital improvements.
Thanks, sir. Next would be city manager's report.
Mayor Council, I read that report to you, and the only thing I was going to add was the estimate on the pipe replacement Cliff just talked about, I believe was sixty-three thousand. And I'll, we'll be bringing that back to council.
How soon does it need to be fixed? Yesterday?
No, we, we, we banded it. The repair is solid. It's just not a permanent repair. What, what I'd like to do is I would like to wrap up the, the budget numbers and see where we are with final on that. And then I, I think we've got an appropriate place for that money to come from without affecting the budget.
And that mandate will last till then?
Oh, yeah.
Provided what? We don't have another?
Provided we don't have another blowout.
Storm or what, you know?
We hope. Yeah, I think it all depends on the pressure on that line. If we see extended pumping like we did for any reason, you can't make any promises. It has as much integrity as a full circle clamp can have on a failing piece of pipe.
Supposed to have a magic eight ball, Cliff. Come on.
Well, hopefully it lasts until we can get it permanently fixed. If not, more duct tape.
Okay, moving on to council members. Councilmember Stalberg, do you have anything to add?
Well, first of all, thank you to the city staff, everybody. Shout out to Nadia back there and everybody else in the PD. They all worked extended hours also. I came up here a couple of times and, yeah, I don't want y'all's job. Y'all can't take people like I can, so, you know what I mean? So thanks again for, for all y'all's hard work. I know there were some, some people online that, that were not as supportive. We're always going to get that. And, yeah, we just need to be the bigger person and, and let them do whatever they want to do. Try to move on. But to also be mindful to start preparing for the next event too, because it'll be here before we know it. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Challenger?
Yeah, same. You know, coming out of a hurricane, I want to thank the entire community for all that they did. I saw neighbors helping neighbors move trees and branches, and I just think that's a, that's a great thing to see. I wish we could do it more often, and it didn't take an emergency to get us together. But I think it was a good thing. So thank you to the entire community.
That's it?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Can we say anything else?
It's all up to you.
I got a YouTube account. Got million views on it.
Councilmember Reynolds?
So I echo what Paul said about thanking the staff. I was here a couple of times myself and tried to check in with you guys as often as I could without bothering you with one more person to talk to in the day. I couldn't be more proud of the job that you guys did. You were phenomenal at keeping the community and us informed of everything that was going on. The day, the morning after the storm, I was blown away by the speed in which Cliff's crews had the streets cleared and had them drivable. That was awesome to see. Lauren, I'm very glad you came. Thank you for opening your business to the community members and, and people who had pets and were desperate to take them somewhere for some relief. I really appreciate that, and I'm happy to have you in our community.
Happy to be here.
Cliff, I apologize that you have to constantly defend your position and your needs and your wants in order to keep this city running as efficiently as it should. I'm a little bit embarrassed by that fact, but luckily, we vote as a panel of five. Don't apologize. I'm glad that we vote as a panel of five and not individually. So, thank you all again.
Amen.
Councilmember Yerson, next up.
Um, I'll be honest, I kind of stayed away from all the city staff. I called Eric maybe once a day, sometimes twice a day, read the emails. You know, what y'all did was amazing. I didn't want to get in y'all's way. I found a way to help out in other places, other directions, and I had nothing else to do. So I did what I could and leave y'all alone. The police departments, the fire department, you know, the city staff did amazing. I will tell Cliff, amazing job that you did. I did go out and volunteer in some other cities. They were not able to do what you did. They weren't able to keep the water on. They weren't able to keep the sewer on. You know, I wish you had control of electricity as well, but you don't. I finally got mine back last night. But, you know, y'all, y'all did an amazing job on top of clearing the roads, keeping the water running, keeping the sewer running, everything else, you know? I think y'all are kind of overlooked sometimes, and I appreciate that. So I appreciate everyone in the city, you know, staff, everybody, what they do. It was really amazing to see what happened.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Fallow?
Again, just thank you to the staff and to everyone with the city for all you've done over the past few weeks. And I know the time you've had to put in for it. Anyway, I follow all the emails and everything. Wasn't up here, I probably didn't say much, but I had bananas turning into banana pudding at the port. So we had to move that really, really quick. That's a fun thing. If you ever want to see that, come out.
Had to move containers in a short amount of time. The other thing I want to say is that I liked to see and that worked really well was the flood mitigation. I noticed all of our drainage systems seemed to be working very well. Even the streets in Alderman One didn't flood too much. They puddled up a little bit, but not as bad as they have in the past. So it was nice to see a project that was completed work like it's supposed to.
Amen.
Money was spent on that. Again, thank you to everybody that, and all the hard work you've done. Good job. I'll leave it at that. Thank you, sir. I get to talk for a second? I'm not going to thank everybody. No, I'm just kidding. Thank you all, each and every one of y'all. From PD to the fire, to Lauren, to the fire extinguishers on Facebook. There was more good than bad out of this, and I'm glad of that. Happy to see that. I'm going to continue to do what I can for the community when I have the time. Unfortunately, like Cliff, myself, and all of y'all, we all have twenty-four hours in a day. If there was more to be bought, I would spend my last dime on it, but that's all we get. So thank you all, and the people that are listening, hopefully. I also want to thank Mayor Boykins for keeping us up to date on the weather, down to the minute the storm hit, and post-storm awareness to the community. So he's keeping us up to date on the heat now, and hopefully he can turn the AC up just a little or down just a little for us. Lastly, I want to say God bless Forty-Fives. That man's doing a lot for our country, and there's no reason that should have happened over the weekend. So I hope that this violence will go away. I just hope for the best for full recovery as fast as he can. I think he's been doing fine, but God bless him.
He played golf yesterday morning.
That's what I heard.
They didn't miss his feet, huh?
I hope for the best for that man. And that's all I have. Might need to borrow a chainsaw or two from Cliff because mine are worn out. But we have any community interest items?
Can I, I was late. Can I get community interest items? I'm not staying. I'm tired, guys. So first of all, I want to say item of community interest is good water in Public Works. I said it before, when I was on council, we had eleven people. Cliff was doing his best. That's when TCQ first became involved in the city, and I told him, give up. We could not fix this problem even with eleven. Eight? I can't believe he's kept it together this long. It's no surprise that pipes are busting left, right and backwards. I'm surprised people don't know which shores we drink the water. God bless him for sticking with it, because I told him to give up and walk away. Anybody who doesn't see how hard these guys work is not paying attention. Second thing of community interest, eight AM, Unity Missionary Baptist Church. I've started paying people ten dollars an hour because Brother David has gone to take the kids to church camp. My husband's out there working after being in the hospital with kidney stones three days ago. It was him, my nephew, my son who's eight, and a guy with one arm, and a couple of other people. With all that was left of the crew, because a lot of the missionaries have gone home. We're losing a lot of the help that we had. I'm feeding them. I'm paying people, random strangers from our community, just bringing them in to help. If anyone knows anyone, can share posts, get some bodies to Unity Richwood at eight AM tomorrow. We've got one more day with the, that I think we're going to use the backhoe to get things going. This church has done a lot for our community through Harvey. They fed the entire city staff through Harvey. I don't know how many of you were here. But this church has done a lot for our community, and they are trying to do more. But the fact that the population of that church is aging now makes it hard, because they're the ones that need help. So I do hope that if you have your outreach, you were all elected officials, hopefully you have an outreach that you can get to get some able bodies over there, because they're doing a lot. I think they were the ones that were at former Mayor Boykins' house as well. So eight AM, Unity Richwood, we can definitely use the help. And Cliff deserves all the things. Give him what he asked for, because he's holding this together with glue and duct tape. And I'm not on council, so I can say that. There's a lot more I can say, and I'm choosing not to. But he deserves it. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to add one thing that people in the community need to know, that this council's not paid. So anything we do is out of goodwill and faith towards the community. So any spare moment we get, we, we do try our best to help out as much as we can. So I hope people take note of that. So that's all I had to add. Sorry.
If anybody does know anybody and needs to get them connected to Lauren, you can send them to me, our Facebook page, and I can get it over to you.
All right. We have any future agenda items?
We'll have plenty.
Yeah, I can't think of anything right now.
None right now?
None right now. We'll have plenty for the recovery.
Okay, well, time is now eight twenty-five with no other business to discuss. This meeting's adjourned.